To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, stand in front, sir. Alright, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Board of Education member.
The Board of Education member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, we'll keep it on. Ready?
Yep.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
No, faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The Office of the Board of Education Member.
The Office of the Board of Education Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, please sign.
Welcome back.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
Of the Office of Superintendent of Schools.
Of the Office of Superintendent of Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome back again.
Yeah, welcome back. So.
Right. Okay. At this time, nominations are now in order for the President of the Board of Education for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'm accepting nominations at this point.
I nominate Jason.
I will second that.
Any other nominees? Okay, nominations are closed. All those in favor of electing Jason Myers as the Board President for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
I.
Any opposed? Standing and motion of credit. Congratulations, Jason. It's ready? Alright. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States. Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New York.
The state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Board.
The duties of the Board.
President.
President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Can you do me a favor on yours? Sign and then I'll take care of the printing. This is where you then take over. And we do the election for VP and also chairman.
Yeah, and I'll call a vote for Vice President.
I nominate Bob.
I'll say. Any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Bob McDermott for Vice President, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Congratulations.
Okay, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Board Vice President.
The Office of Board Vice President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
I swear to you.
Does he do it now?
Do we vote on that first? Item six?
Yeah. Do it at six?
Yeah.
Perfect.
I'll call for motion to accept item number six, letters A through H, which are the appointment of other officers, the district clerk, district clerk substitute, purchasing agent, treasurer, tax collector, internal planes auditor, deputy treasurer, and attendance clerk.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Motion seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Let's repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New York.
Of this, and this, of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of office.
Of district clerk.
Of district clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, we'll look to do these in groups of five. So I'll call for a motion to accept number seven through eleven. Which is the appointment by the Board, appointments by the Board of Education, bonding of positions, proof taxable collection, over and under a dollar, designation of depositories, and designation of official newspapers.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Call for motion to accept numbers twelve through sixteen. Approval of petty cash funds, thirteen approval of designation of signatories for checks, fourteen authorization to sign contracts, fifteen authorization for bid openings, sixteen adoption of cooperative bidding resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept numbers seventeen through twenty-one, seventeen to approve best value bidding resolution, eighteen the authorization for signatures on claims and payrolls, nineteen approved meeting dates and times listed on the Board of Education calendar, twenty the authorization to invest district funds, and twenty-one the authorization to make credit applications.
I'll make a motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept numbers twenty-two through twenty-six, twenty-two the adoption of policies and bylaws, twenty-three appointment of committees on special education and preschool, twenty-four the appointment of impartial hearing officer, twenty-five the appointment of surrogate parent, and twenty-six approve appointment of staff on an interim basis.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Call for motion to accept numbers twenty-seven through thirty-one, twenty-seven approve school physicians, twenty-eight approve homestead, non-homestead tax rate system for levying property taxes, twenty-nine authorization to submit applications and reports for federal school lunch and milk programs, thirty the authorization to file for federal grant applications, and thirty-one appoint school attorney.
I'll make a motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept numbers thirty-two through thirty-six, thirty-two the appointment of civil service officer, thirty-three appointment of Title IX compliance officers, thirty-four the appointment of external auditors, thirty-five the appointment of internal auditors, thirty-six the appointment of district audit committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Do we actually appoint the committee positions unless we go back?
Speaking of regular.
That's right.
What's that?
We circle back to those committee members.
Members?
Yeah. Thirty-seventh is over. Call for motion to accept numbers thirty-seven through forty-one, thirty-seven appointment of capital project committee, thirty-eight the appointment of policy committee, thirty-nine the adoption of nine thirteen resolution, forty the appointment of district records management officer, forty-one the appointment of district records access officer for freedom of information law.
I'll make a motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, stand, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept numbers forty-two through forty-six, forty-two the appointment of district records access appeal officer for freedom of information, forty-three the appointment of Orleans Niagara Health Insurance Consortium Representative, forty-four to approve yearly mailing of reasonable assurance letters, and forty-five the authorization for sports playoffs and sectional competitions.
So moved.
Actually, I got one more, I'm sorry. Forty-six, the resolution for authorization of budget transfer.
So moved.
With enthusiasm. All the, all those in favor, and move and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept numbers forty-seven through fifty-one, forty-seven the authorization for the approval of employee travel and approval of travel by the superintendent, forty-eight approve mileage reimbursement rate, forty-nine approve standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointment officials, fifty approve fiscal consultants, and fifty-one approve administrative, administrative investment firm.
Make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Call for motion accept numbers fifty-two through fifty-six, fifty-two approve agreement with Medicaid Consulting Services, fifty-three approve bond counsel, fifty-four approve Medicaid compliance officer, fifty-five approve educational, educational official, and fifty-six approve dignity act coordinators.
So moved.
So I moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, stand, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept numbers fifty-seven through sixty-one, fifty-seven approve athletic code of conduct, fifty-eight approve attendance officer, fifty-nine approve representative and signatory to the Niagara Power Coalition and host community standing committee, sixty approve a hair compliance officer, sixty-one approve school pesticide representative.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept number sixty-two through sixty-six, sixty-two approve chemical hygiene officer, sixty-three approve district residency officer, sixty-four approve homeless liaison, sixty-five approve cellphone use, sixty-six approve Indian policies and procedures.
I'll make a second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, stand, motion carries. Now I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. For the adjournment of the reorganizational meeting, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Okay, I'll call for a motion to enter into public session for a regular meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, stand, motion carries. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our presentation of the district-wide safety plan.
You can just bring that up. Thank you. This year, the changes really in the district-wide safety plan have to do with staff changes only. So if there are any questions related to the district-wide safety plan, this is the time that we would take them as we are required to hold a public hearing related to the district-wide safety plan. The safety plan is on our website under community resources. It's there all the time for anyone to see. We now have to then make it available to public for this hearing. So if there's no questions, I move out of the hearing. I hear no questions. Next, we also have an obligation. We have an obligation because of, we are a district to receive title funds to present the parent and family engagement policy. Again, there's no change to that policy. However, we need to show that policy and give people an opportunity if they'd like to speak here in the public hearing related to the parent and family engagement policy. Anyone? Okay. Those public hearings are over, Jason, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, move to privilege of the floor for any residents' comments. Have you signed up? Anyone interested? Okay. Moving on then to our consensus agenda items. Call for a motion for items one through three.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Now moving on to our personal items. We're separating few here, so I'll call for a motion to accept personal items four, five, six, seven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, all the way to twenty-four.
Make a move, second.
And moving seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, stand, motion carries. I'll turn over to Mr. Dan.
Thank you. First person I have to introduce to the board tonight and ask for the board's approval for appointment tonight is Kelly Dorian. Kelly? Very happy Kelly is here tonight to meet all of you. We asked the Board of Education to appoint her for the Tuscarora Elementary Principal position. At first, we were delighted to hear that she was able to make it tonight. At first, she was not going to be able to, but she's so interested and dedicated to our district, she's already looking at homes in the area, so she made some appointments for tomorrow. So I just wanted to say thank you for coming in and being here with us. Kelly is a native of Hamburg, undergraduate work and graduate work spans between SUNY Fredonia, Cortlandt, and also the Elmira Literacy Program. And she has nine plus years of experience in the Elmira City School District, which is where she's coming from. Those experiences are very rich and varied. Anything from inclusive environments and inclusion environments in schools to working on policy for one-to-one devices and implementation, as well as a curriculum mentor at the district at Elmira, and leading some work with inclusive strategies in the classroom. So she's bringing a bevy of experience with her. We asked the Board of Education to approve her this evening for the Tuscarora Elementary Principal position.
Yeah, I'll call for a motion to approve the appointment of Tom Dorian as the Divisionary Principal of Tuscarora Elementary School. I'm here in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Congratulations.
It's up, Tricia Jordan. Tricia? Thank you, Tricia, for joining us this evening. We asked the Board of Education to support Tricia for the position here at the high school as the assistant principal. And Tricia moved way back when in two thousand thirteen to Florida and spent a lot of time there. Certainly a very dedicated family person looking to relocate back to our area and has done so. But she taught ELA for three years and served as an instructional coaster, a coach at the high school level in Florida for four years, where she also became a middle school assistant principal for four years, and there's a couple of different grades and types of assistant principals in Florida and the county she worked in. But those all held different responsibilities, anything from working in more like of a discipline capacity to curriculum instruction. And that propelled her to her position that she is currently holding at Batavia High School as assistant principal, and she's looking to join our team. But when she's not working, she's certainly very interested in hanging out with the dog and playing volleyball, softball, and watching the Bills, prevailing theme, and being with her family. So again, we'd like to ask for the board's support for Tricia Jordan here at Niagara High School as the assistant principal.
I'll call for motion to appoint Tricia Jordan as Divisionary Assistant Principal of Niagara High School. I'm moving seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Congratulations.
Mr. Tom Murphy? We asked the Board of Education to support appoint Tom Murphy this evening for the Assistant Business Official position here at the district. Tom is living in Houston, so very close by. He's worked in school since two thousand and seven. He also, I did not know this, worked as a TV producer and has done a lot of work, obviously, in the school systems, but having done payroll, claims auditing, certainly, you know, he has good understanding of the financial responsibilities of school districts. His hobbies include being a long-suffering Bills fan, is what he says, and traveling. You know, we all suffer with you. But this year is the year. So we're looking forward to having you, Tom, and I know you're looking forward to being, coming into our district and being a part of it. And you can't wait to get to work. So we ask for the Board of Education's support for Tom Murphy.
Oh, my motion. To approve the appointment of Tom Murphy, Divisionary Assistant Business Official, as presented. They've moved and accepted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Congratulations.
Next up is Hope Ballin. Prevailing theme, from my understanding here, the next few people are all various new soccer players. And so I'll start with Hope here, and Hope is going to be serving us in the second grade long-term substitute position at Eric Road Schools. She has prior experience working at the Tonawanda City School District as a teacher assistant, and she's worked primarily in the grades four and two, so that will pair well for our needs here at Eric Road. She's finished her master's of, congratulations, by the way, her master's of childhood education at Buff State, and that was just recently, I believe, right? And has also an undergraduate degree in chemistry and a bachelor's of chem, so that's also very interesting. Also an MBA. We're picking up someone here that's multi-dimensional. Five years of Division One soccer at Canisius. She's very excited to be here at Niagara Wefield. We're certainly excited to have her. She did a great job in the interview process, so we ask for the board's support for Hope Ballin this evening for the grade two long-term sub position.
Yeah, call for a motion to appoint Hope Ballin as the LCS teacher editor, which is always presented. So.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries.
Gianna. This name may sound familiar to the Board of Education. Gianna Iolo. Gianna has been with us this past year as a long-term sub at Eric Road, and there was a need for establishing a full-time position at grade four, and Gianna wears with the board's support to appoint Gianna to that position. She has her bachelor's of science in childhood education from St. John Fisher. She's Grand Island native and has earned her literacy education studies from U of U most recently. This is Gianna's fifth year teaching. Prior to coming here to Niagara Wefield, she was with the Rochester City School District. And she's just delighted to be part of the community. She's been a great addition this past year. She's looking at continuing on in her hard work with us here at Niagara Wefield. In her spare time, she enjoys traveling, reading, and most of all, being with her family. They're here this evening with her. So we ask for board's support for Gianna Iolo for the grade four position at Eric Road.
Yeah, call for motion to appoint Gianna Iolo as Divisionary 1.0 TE elementary teacher at Eric Road Elementary. Second, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Congratulations.
What's up, Matty Everts? So, very excited to be at Tuscarora as a physical education teacher, so we're asking for the board's support this evening for Matty. Very, very proud of Niagara Wefield alumnus, and she was a class of nineteen. Certainly, that name sounds somewhat familiar. Mr. Everts here. Mr. Kevin Everts is recent retired in Niagara Wefield Schools. A distinguished, very distinguished career, I should say, for his entirety here at the school. But Matty is a graduate of Rockford, Bachelor of Science, majoring in the course of physical education. The last two years that she spent in her professional career have been at Buffalo Charter.
Yep.
At Buffalo Charter, and she'd been coaching softball in Tonawanda, and she wants to continue coaching sports for us here at Niagara Wefield when those opportunities arise. Just an interesting little tidbit, all three of the candidates that we've talked to tonight have either played soccer with each other or against each other. I found that out during the onboarding process. A lot of Western New York flash talk for those soccer fans out there. So, you know, we're picking out kids that are very, you know, interested here in our athletic program, certainly in our district, and very vested and interested. So we're asking for the board's support for Matty Everts. Also, one last tidbit. Class of nineteen, Maryville graduate, Christian Goode, right here. Who she dates. Alright, that's one of my students, and he also could do magic tricks, but I won't embarrass him tonight in front of the board, just to add a little levity. But that being said, we ask for the board's support of Matty, so.
Yeah, call for a motion to appoint Madison Everts as Divisionary 1.0 TE Physical Education Teacher at Tuscarora Elementary. So. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, moving on to our standing committees.
So, just really quick. We have a couple of concerns as far as timeline. They're working through a new schedule for both the high school office area and the bus garage. That's what you see behind us. These are blocking our new office. This here is our office for our bus garage temporarily. Hopefully, and we're expecting that still to be done before the beginning of the school year, but at the next meeting, we'll have a much better idea on where we are timeline-wise with all of these projects.
Thank you very much. From the Policy Committee, we have the first reading of Policy thirty-seven, ten, Morals and Honorariums. We have no action on that tonight, correct?
Okay.
And then also, is this correct, the second reading?
It is. Second reading.
If I could.
Yeah.
So this, this policy here, it has to be adopted before August first. We don't have another meeting, so that's why it's both a first and second reading.
And that'll be for the reading and adoption of Policy thirty-seven, sixteen, the use of internet-enabled devices during the school day. So I'll call for a motion for that.
Seventy-three, sixteen.
What did I say?
Thirty-seven, sixteen.
I'm not, yeah, okay. Policy seven-three-one-six. Call for a motion to approve that.
So moved. Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. No external communications. The ex-officio student member, first of all, welcome. And you haven't reported yet. Fair enough. Yeah, welcome. We're glad that you're here. You want to tell us anything about yourself?
I am a student here, and I have good grades, so hopefully I don't fail you guys.
At least you're not some random star point kid who wandered in.
That's important, that's important.
Welcome. Glad that you're here. Look forward to having you with us. The president's report, just want to say graduation was excellent. Thanks for everyone who participated in that and may that go off seamlessly. Pass it over to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you. I promise to keep it short. Um, Jason talked about graduation. I, I would just take that a step further. I know, uh, this is which the high school principal would say the same. The, the senior class was absolutely incredible this year, particularly with the, all of the end of the year activities, the way they conducted themselves. They were certainly ready to graduate, but it's so, um, with class, with distinction. So we, we really appreciate their leadership as seniors, particularly coming down the stretch. At the next meeting, I intend to share some information. We just received it, the draft of the electric bus feasibility study. It's a pretty long document. The one thing that I would share tonight is that, um, there, there certainly seems to be an issue with the amount of power that would be required coming into the district. So it would actually require, you know, a second, um, relay, um, for that power. So that's something that, um, was identified in the survey. There's a lot of other pieces to it. We'll put something together for the next meeting and bring everybody up to speed. And then, l- last but not least, um, the district was featured in something called Business View Magazine. I encourage you to take a look at it. If you type in Business View Magazine and Niagara Wefield, uh, you, you'll see, uh, an article that I think, um, nicely highlights a lot of the things that we've been doing here over the past, uh, let's say, decade. So they did a really nice job with the article. They called, they wanted to feature us. We agreed, and they did a nice job.
Yeah, it's a nice piece. Thank you very much. Um, no reports to the board? Any items for board discussion? Any old business? New business? Uh, should we do the appointment of our committees?
Yeah, committee chairs at least.
Okay. Um, so for capital projects, um,
I would like to stay on.
You would like to stay on?
And I'm on the chair too, so.
Okay.
Uh, come back as a board member as opposed to being just a kind of a public.
Okay, I know Wendy had expressed interest as well. Um, is anyone else here that would round out with three? Is that okay with everyone? Okay, um, and then Bob, you wanted to chair it?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Do we need to vote on that, or is that just appointments?
That's appointments by you. You, 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 the group appoints and you talk to them and they, you appoint the chair.
Work for everyone, and Bob to chair it, and, uh, Steve and Wendy to also round that out.
Powers.
Now for the policy committee, um, Rick, would you be interested in?
Well, I was usually on the audit.
He's, he's the chair of the audit.
Okay. Anyone interested in sharing policy?
I, didn't Wendy say she was, was something she was interested in?
I know she wanted to be on it. I'm not sure if she wanted.
I'll chair it if you want to.
Okay, um.
Okay.
And you said.
Shall we check with Wendy if she wants to chair it? It doesn't matter.
It doesn't, I just, I don't, I mean, if you want to check with Wendy, that's fine.
Can we leave that unresolved at this point?
You.
Um, so then, a third person to be on it. Anyone interested, Mike?
I had a hard time making it to five o'clock, so.
You want, I'll be on it, I mean, I have no problem.
Would you be interested in that and audit?
I understand.
Just audit.
Okay.
So Bob will be on it. So Bob, Wendy, and Steve?
Yep.
Okay. And audit committee. So you would like to continue to chair it?
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Okay. And you want to continue to be on it? And then, let's see, we need one more person.
I want to.
I, I'll do that one.
Okay. It's Craig. All right, sounds good.
Uh, Rick is the chair, Mike and Craig. Yeah, that's not, that's not an official appointment.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other new business? Any public comments? Any board member comments?
Just want to say, uh, welcome to the new people, um, as Mr. Stack had mentioned about, um, that we played against the, all of them, I can't coach against all of you in soccer, because I coached for North Tonawanda for so many years, so. Um, you know, a little sketchy about the Tonawanda people coming back over here. We've always said that with the superintendent too, so. Um, but congratulations to all of you.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Steve said it all.
Yeah, welcome and congratulations, and, uh, thank you to the board for, uh, entrusting the presidency once again. And then congratulations again to Bob and, you know. And with that, I'll call, we're going to, exactly, okay, I'll call for a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing current litigation, negotiations, and employment of particular persons.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second, maybe let them know that there's not going to be no business.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Renee, there'll be no business.
No business.
After.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, stained, motion carries. Uh, I turn to executive session. Thank you for coming.